To order for the January 18th meeting, we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We administered earlier this evening the oath of office to the three new members of the commission. So, we'll dispense with that at this point in the meeting. Jess, I'll entertain a roll call, please.
Mr. Sedoti.
Here.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Here.
Mr. Varga.
Here.
Mr. Cicero.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Perkovic.
Here.
Mr. Snow.
Here. At this point in the meeting, we'll do the election of officers for the planning commission for the next two-year period. So, I'll entertain motions for chairmanship. I'd like to nominate Bill Snow for chairman.
Second.
Any other nominations? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close the nominations. Anyone?
Second.
Jessica, call the roll, please.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. And then for vice chairman, I need a nomination.
I'd like to make a motion to for vice chairman of Joseph Sedoti.
Is there another nomination? Okay, we'll close the nominations. Jess, call the roll, please.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. Then there's a secretarial position that we need a nomination for that, too. You don't have to take minutes.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Jeffrey Varga.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any other nominations? Nominations are closed. I entertain a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. That concludes that. I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of December 21st, 2017.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Jess, when you're ready.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
I think you should abstain on that.
Abstain from that.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Stain.
Mr. Cook.
Abstain.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. We have one public hearing this evening. The format we follow for public hearings is we allow the applicant an opportunity to tell us what they want to do at a location. Then those wishing to speak in favor are afforded a similar opportunity. Then those wishing to speak against or just have questions are given an opportunity to ask questions or speak against. So, with that in mind, the first conditional use permit to allow a private school at 7550 Bellflower. Is that applicant here? Would you come forward and identify yourself for the clerk, please? Up here at the podium over here.
I'm Doug Wardell, Grace Christian Academy. And we're looking to move our school to Victory Lane on Bellflower. It's a fifth grade through 12th grade. And we're chartered by the, or a non-chartered, non-supported school of the state of Ohio, OH-08.
Okay, is there anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak against? If you come forward and identify, or maybe you just have questions. Either way, if you're speaking. Okay, would you come up? I need you to come up and identify yourself for the clerk.
My name is Sam Shammy. I live at 6901 Cherry Blossom Drive. First question is, how big is this school intended to be? How many students?
Okay, we'll get you an answer for those questions. Keep going if you have more questions.
No, that's really the only question, but I do have several concerns.
Okay, you want to express them, then?
Yeah. One is, if any of you live in that area or traverse Bellflower at that time in the morning, the traffic there is horrendous because of Lake Catholic. Sometimes it takes me, I mean, five minutes, literally, to make a left-hand turn out of my street, either Cherry Blossom or Spring Blossom. So, we would be against anything that's going to increase that traffic. The other thing is, have to be concerned, I mean, I'm reaching retirement age. I have to be concerned about property value. The value of my house is my retirement. And we think that adding a school there, adding traffic, would certainly decrease the value of our property, all the properties that butt up against it. So, with that, we're really, I mean, we're going to go down as being against.
Okay.
You know, building that school.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Sir, if you'd identify yourself for the clerk when you come up, please.
Hi, I'm Mark Crowley from Lake Catholic High School. And I thought I heard building. So, the question we had was, what's the plan for stormwater in terms of if there's new construction on the property?
Okay, we'll get an answer for that. Okay, anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Jane Smirky. I live at 6820 Georgetown. And my concern regards water and the retention basin and what safety considerations are there.
Okay, we'll have that question answered as well. Anyone else? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. You guys step back to the podium, please. Larry, any comments from the administration?
None.
Okay, question arose about new construction.
Not new construction, we're just, I find the spaces.
You're going to reconfigure the building as it exists?
Right.
Okay. So, that answers that question. The question Larry came up about, water flow, water retention in the detention pond?
If there's no construction on the site, it's just going to be interior building permits. The city's not going to look into any stormwater management requirements.
Okay.
They're not adding anything to the site that would affect that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, maybe to make it clear to the members of the public, they're talking, the proposal is to utilize the existing building and its existing rooms, maybe with some minor modifications, but I don't think that's proposed, so.
Okay.
There's no addition, no new construction.
No new construction.
Correct. But that does raise the question as to whether or not, what the vision is for this school if it's permitted in the future, increasing enrollment, increasing staffing. And so, that's something that I think we wanted to have some discussion regarding tonight.
Okay, what would trigger new construction?
Could I speak? I'm the pastor of the church.
Sure.
My name's David Bill. Right now, there's 14 students that are in the school. And they're going to be using five existing rooms with no modification to the rooms whatsoever. There's tables in each of the rooms. The students will be inside all five of those rooms. And our building capacity for those five rooms would be a total of about 60 people.
Okay. And there's sufficient parking on-site for?
Yeah, we have, I think it's 74 total spots.
Okay. Now, Larry, what about traffic flow on Bellflower? Is there a concern there? I mean, obviously with Lake Catholic there, there's always a concern because it's very populated school.
Correct.
There's a lot of traffic.
Even in front of Minter High School, you're going to have traffic at peak times, right before a school starts. There's not much, I think the city in the past has made improvements to try and help alleviate some of that. But traffic is always going to be an issue near the high school. They're having 14 students there. I have to believe they're going to have carpooling for their students. Multiple, probably families.
Let me ask you this question. How long has the 14 students been there? How long have they been there, attending school?
Well, they've been there all this year and last year.
Okay, so two years. Okay. Commission members, any questions for the applicant or the administration?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Varga.
How do you intend to do outdoor or physical education or outdoor activities?
I mean, activities we do outside is on the grass in good weather. We don't do organized sports. We don't do competitive sports.
So, and this would be during the normal school hours that you would have, but you'd still, you'd go out in the grass area behind the facility?
Yeah, we have a backyard of the church. We have a total of six acres, but we have a grass area that's probably a little, about an acre, half an acre or so of all grass area before our woods area.
And when you say that you don't have any organized sports, but you do have some organized activities relative to physical education. I guess the only concern I would have is to, is that there'd be a sensitivity to noise because the lot's not that wide and you have residential on both sides. So, if you do activities that you limit the sound or the noise generated by the activities.
Let me go back to my question about the, what would trigger expansion of the number of students? I mean, how many students would you need in there to trigger construction?
Right now, at the capacity that we're able to accommodate, once it would go beyond that, then obviously Doug and his administration, our board at our church would sit down with them and reevaluate that vision and then proceed from that point. But we're able to accommodate in-house right now up to, like I said, 60 in the rooms comfortably.
We've closed the public hearing, but if you want to come up and ask a question.
No, actually, you just answered.
Oh, okay, okay. Commission members, any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sedoti.
What was behind your business decision to relocate from Kirtland to the Minter location?
Just a matter of the facility that we're in now and the relationship, it might be changing. And we just thought it would be a better move to bring it a little bit farther north to accommodate the area.
These 14 students that you project along with the seven teachers, are they currently at the Kirtland location? And you're just moving them to the Minter location?
Yes, and we have not made the decision whether we're going to move them right now or we wait until the end of the school year. We haven't made that decision yet. And the seven teachers are part-time teachers. There's never usually more than two teachers or three teachers teaching at one time. Come and go throughout the day.
I raised that question because noted that you provide secondary education from grades five to 12. 14 students right now doesn't seem like a very large student body. So, are you saying these 14 students are dispersed into different grades? And they're segregated and they're taught separately?
Not necessarily segregated and taught separately. Sometimes we combine them together because of the Christian, classical Christian education we use. We use a program called Omnibus, which is all the business. And we lump them into two different groups. And we do break them down for their math and those that are generic to that age.
You stated there's no bus transportation. The parents will drive them. What about food service? What do they do for lunch?
Their lunch.
They bring no lunches?
We don't do any cooking on-site.
Okay. And final question, can you comment on the fire department's remark about a manual fire alarm system is required?
Yes, sir, we have that in the building. We have four different stations, manual full fire alarm system.
And what about the Knox box?
We don't have a Knox box. It wasn't required for us at that time, being in the facility, from Cheryl Simon, I believe, the fire inspector. When we had all our inspections and everything, we were approved for everything that we had.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Anyone else, questions? I need you back up to the podium if you want to ask a question. Since we're televised, it makes all the sense in the world to be up there and so people can hear you.
My earlier question regarding the safety with the water retention basin there. Water is a drawing card for kids. So, what safety features are there going to be to keep the kids away from the water?
Supervision.
Yeah, the teachers, I would guess, would do that, right?
Yeah, they don't go out on their own.
So.
Because I know sometimes, like on Sundays, the kids are back there playing around the water and throwing stuff in and.
Yeah, but those are neighborhood kids, right?
No, those are congregation kids.
That would, not to insult you, but that's incorrect information. We don't allow our kids to go out there unsupervised. And we've never had anything of that particular nature.
Well, then I guess I don't know who the children belong to, but it's on Sunday. So, my concern with having school kids there, I mean, water is, it's a safety issue.
Okay. Thanks. So, what could you do about that? About the kids playing in the water? You're in school, but you have Sunday school, I assume you have Sunday school on Sundays, right?
A part of the school.
No, that's not part of the school. That's part of our church. And we only have, we only have three kids in kids' church right now. And I can tell you basically that with those three kids, they're always supervised.
But it's part and parcel of the overall operation of the campus. So, that's why I'm asking the question, so.
Yeah, I mean, they're obviously supervised when they're out back.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Larry, any additional comments from the administration?
The retention basin, so the board members are aware, is not on the church property. It is a separate retention basin that is, was constructed as part of the Georgetown subdivision so that they could, for their stormwater management.
Okay, so that's not their property that has the detention or retention on it?
Correct. It's not the church's property. And the city of Minter does not require fencing around detention basins.
Okay. So, you'll keep an eye on it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
Any other questions? You read the staff report.
Yes.
Okay, you agree to the condition that's in there?
Absolutely.
Okay, good. Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with one condition.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Jess, when you're ready.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. Okay, you're set.
Thank you.
Under old business, number two, miscellaneous review of an amendment to a conditional use permit at 9355 Pine Needle. Is that applicant here? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to remove it from the table, please.
Second.
Jess, when you're ready.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. Okay, how's the finger?
Perfect.
Good. So, tell us what you want to do.
Conditional use permit for my SafetyCon Xbox where I keep all of my safety cones, air cases for my construction paving outfit.
I thought we, didn't we address this once before? Or was that a different operation?
Different.
Okay. Larry, any comments from the administration?
You are correct, Mr. Chairman. It was conditioned as part of the original conditional use permit that that box not be stored there. The applicant has decided to come back and request that it be kept there during a site visit. It's not as visible as I believe that we all thought it would be in the back corner of the property. They provided some pictures of it. But besides that, administration really has no issues with that box being left there.
Oh, okay. Mr. Zeeman, any comments from the legal department?
Yes, obviously, the request is to modify the CUP to remove the one prohibition. I think part of the concern is that this not become a de facto accessory structure that's in use for purposes of the business's operation. We see that periodically. You know, businesses will just throw something up there and not pull a permit for it. So, we'd hate to establish any precedent where this starts getting used in the daily operations of the business. I understand the proposal is that this is strictly to be taken off-site and used during their job. So, I think one of the things that sort of informs the discussion is just how often is it actually there? You know, versus being off-site? Is it being utilized for any purposes while it's there? And again, is it an appropriate storage location, not just currently, but if the adjacent property should be developed, does it become a bit of an impediment to that environment at that time? So, I think those are some of the things that inform the discussion. We understand it's used in parcel of the business. But we're just concerned as how much time it's actually going to be there.
Can you answer that question?
My paving industry only works eight months out of the year. And we do go on operations for sometimes 60 to 90 days. And it does consider for us to move, and it is an onsite office, an offsite office, but it's mainly just for storing our safety equipment while it's there on-site.
Got you. Commission members, questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sedoti.
So, this outside corrugated box, that's to remain on-site. You're not going to take it to jobs and bring?
Yes, I do.
You take it to jobs?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Now, do they come off the jobs every day? Or does it say how long the job is and it stays out there for the duration of the job?
If it's a two-week project, we take.
So, if you're an eight-month out-of-the-year operation, then the other four months it sits on the site?
On the offsite because we're not working, yes, sir.
Other questions, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sedoti. I'm sorry, Mr. Varga.
My name. What's the, you have no pavement there. What's the physical condition of the ground where this is kept?
It's paved underneath.
It is paved because I'm looking at this drawing and it doesn't show any pavement. It shows the pavement stopping at the back of the building. So, this is paved up to that and underneath it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I would strongly suggest, in fact, I'd make it a condition that you keep it at least three feet from the property line.
It's, it's. It is 17 feet off the property line, sir.
Oh. Okay, because the little diagram we got right here shows it right on the property line. The sideline. Okay, so you're saying it's not on the sideline. It's quite a ways off the sideline. Okay.
17 feet off the line.
So, how many days do you think it sits on-site other than those eight, other than those four months that it's located there?
It's off-site periodically and back to site between job sites. I'd have to say 30 days.
30 days out of the eight months?
Back to 15, back to 30.
Okay, okay. Other questions from the administration? Anything, Larry, from you?
If the commission wishes, you could always put a condition that a fence be installed along, a solid fence be installed along that property line to provide screening of the box from the offsite views.
You can do that, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Now, give it some screening away there when those other properties are developed.
Right.
There's at least a solid.
I have a question.
Go right ahead, Mr. Varga.
What is the zoning of the property next door?
It's the same. It's zoned MIP, industrial park.
All right. And in the back property line?
Same.
Same, okay, so there's no residential.
No residential.
Butting this property.
Thank you.
Okay, so, Mr. Sedoti.
Larry, was there an agreement prior that the rest of their lot had to be paved in the rear? Or some sort of surfacing put down?
The condition was that the asphalt paved there shall be paved by May 31st. There was no distance. When they came before us previously, some of that lot back area was to be used for, as a gravel storage yard, if I remember correctly. A lot of times with the heavier equipment, we allow for a gravel storage area because it's just going to get torn off.
Right, right.
Due to the heavy equipment that's used back there on a daily basis.
Go right ahead.
Where all vehicles and trailers are parked, including that SafetyCon Xbox, is paved surface.
Okay.
Larry, did you check this out? Is it satisfied to the city?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Okay, so I think the only thing we're dealing with is the fencing. Which you agreed to do, right? Four sides?
Want me to fence on the entire property in the back?
Well, not entirely. I think we've got to shield the storage facility, yeah.
I will, I will shield the east property.
And you'll get the administration to plan for that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
You'll have to get a fence permit.
Right.
Yes.
I want you to see the plan and be comfortable with the plan ahead of time before they get the permit, before it's up.
Okay, we will.
Is that good for the commission?
I think so.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
The only thing I'd otherwise I'd suggest is to make, we need some sort of baseline to establish whether or not this is routinely being used in furtherance of construction or whether or not it's just going to sit there and grow, you know, get rooted. During the construction season, if we can kind of like ascertain that it's not going to be present on-site for more than some specific period, then maybe that'll establish some baseline that in fact this is, this is still actively being used in furtherance of their construction activities. And I'm not just concerned with the specific owner, but if the business is sold, sometimes in that transition, they get some.
Things get lost?
Yeah, CUPs can get a little ignored or lost or what have you.
So, I guess how can we identify the number of days that it'll be on-site versus the number of days it'll be off-site?
Each year, each year in the construction industry, you don't know if you're going to land a job for.
Well, as good as you are, you'll land jobs all the time, right?
For sure, but.
Mr. Chairman. We have, you have a four-month period where you're not doing work because of the, so could we use four months as the limit?
Well, but.
Given time?
The applicant indicated that there are times in between jobs where it's going to be present there. And so, it's going to be on-site during the construction season. So, I'm just trying to understand if it's, if it's sitting there for 30 days during the construction season and, you know, continuously, is that? It may be indicative of a lack of work or it may be indicative that the purpose of it has changed. So, we certainly want to make some inquiry at least to ascertain whether or not it's still actively being used for construction.
Well, the maximum number would be four months, right? Based on, we know that it's going to be there at least four months during the winter time. So, up to four months. If it goes over four months, he has to, what, move it? Is that what you're suggesting?
Well, I think, we would certainly look at it as a potential violation of the CUP.
Okay. You understand? What they're talking about?
Well, if the asphalt industry, and we have snow until June 1st, I.
We're not going to.
I would have to say the act of God of having snow and.
Well, I realize, I realize it's a difficult situation to.
To 120 days straight and then just move it somewhere. I think that's asking a lot out of me.
Well, we could always put it inside.
No, that won't fit inside.
I know.
It's just the nature of the structure that it can be utilized for general business and it could just be left there and used for some permanent purpose. We want to make sure that it, we have some ascertainable way, some objective way of making sure that this thing's no longer being used in the construction industry. It needs to, it needs to go or, you know, expand your building or do something. But this is not going to be a permanent on-site office.
So, you're the lawyer. Give me some language.
Again, I was trying to differentiate between the construction season and the non-construction season where we know it's just going to sit there for four months. So, my thought was, so, again, I think if it's on-site for, you know, more than 30 contiguous days, 60 contiguous, continuous days during the construction season, it certainly asks, you know, bears the question as to whether or not it's still, you know, a piece of a construction equipment or a species of construction.
So, what's the reasonable number, 30 days?
That's kind of industry-specific. I hate to, again, I don't know that there's a lawyerly answer to that. I'm trying to find an industry-specific answer to that so that, you know, we're not defeating.
What about, I mean, this construction period changes from year to year because of weather. So, let's say during the construction season, and that will be different every year. year, but during that, the say forty-five days contiguous days, if it's been forty-five or sixty days, I'm trying to develop a thing that addresses his concern and addresses your concern. How about sixty days? If it sits there for sixty days, it's in violation of the CUP during the construction season, which is a variant from year to year.
With putting a fence up, correct.
With putting a fence. That if it's sitting there for over sixty days, you pull it offsite because you're not using it?
Most certain jobs don't take more than sixty days, what if it's over thirty? Where do I move it?
No, what I'm saying is that you don't, it doesn't sit there for more than sixty days without being used.
What if, what if it's seventy days because we had three weeks of rain?
I don't know, again, I'm trying, I'm trying to figure out a way to define it.
What did it say?
Put a day count on this, this is ridiculous.
Well, in an average, well, the problem is, again, it's, it's, we don't want it becoming something that it's not intended to be, and we run into that slippery slope very frequently despite, you know, and again, the, you know, today's owner is not the owner that we're dealing with necessarily years from now. So how often is it removed during your typical, your average year? I mean, how often is it actually put into use?
That's my question.
Mr. Sadoti, go ahead.
Yes, our construction season starts, say for the first two or three months you're doing driveways throughout the city in a manner, you're not lugging that to all your driveway jobs.
No, but if we have a larger site in Solon or somewhere, that's my onsite safety and...
Right, so if you've got the contract to pave loads, then you're going to move that container there and work out of it.
Yes.
So there's a chance it's going to stay there for god knows how long if you're doing small jobs.
Put it inside. Okay, it seems like we're stymied here a little bit. What's the pleasure of the commission?
Again, I'm trying to find this magic number here.
Right.
Can we say that if it's not moved within a year, that it becomes a violation of the CUP?
Yes, sir.
And Larry, you'll be out checking on that, right?
Put it in my calendar.
Okay.
Alright, how about if it's sat in the same place for a year, then it's in a violation of the CUP?
Yes, sir.
Because it's not actively being used as part of the business.
Correct.
But in the meantime, you can put the fencing around it.
You still have the fencing.
Right.
Want it around it or on the east?
On the east property line. He's got to be able to pull it out.
Well, you can do that with gates. But I'll go, I'll do what you guys suggest, so, give me a motion.
I'll make a motion that we ask for fencing along the east property line. And that we, and a second requirement is that it must be moved as part of your business once a year.
Yes, sir.
Not to be in violation of the CPU.
Yes, sir.
So are we talking board-on-board fence, eight feet high? What are we talking? Anybody?
How high is that back?
Eight foot.
Eight foot high?
Nine foot?
You do either an eight-foot or a ten-foot high fence, I don't think they make nine.
Okay, so how about ten?
Argentina wire. Argentina wire on top?
No.
Okay.
No barbed wire on top.
No barbed wire?
No.
No HVAC units, right?
No. A ten-foot high solid fence.
Okay.
Sure, the fence is ten foot high visually.
Visually, that way there it's two feet above, code requires if you're storing anything outside, usually in a retail environment, you're a foot higher than what you're storing, intending to screen. And just because of the fact, I know they sell eight and ten-foot high fences, I don't think they do a nine-foot high.
Okay, so ten.
Okay, so the first, the first item is that it would be a ten-foot fence on the east property line. And the second condition is that the unit has to be moved at least once a year in order not to be in violation of the CPU.
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Just when you're ready.
Mr. Sadoti?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic?
Yes.
Mr. Snow?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're good. Okay, item three under old business is tabled in the previous meeting, will remain on the table as will item four, as will item five. Item six, we're going to dismiss, Larry, is that correct?
That is correct, they had a change in the business plan.
Change in the philosophy?
Change in the philosophy, right now they will be back, so they just asked to...
Okay, so item six, I'll need to remove it from the table.
Motion to remove item six from the table.
Second.
Just when you're ready.
Mr. Sadoti?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic?
Yes.
Mr. Snow?
Yes, now I'll entertain a motion to dismiss without prejudice.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sadoti?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic?
Yes.
Mr. Snow?
Yes. Okay, item seven under new business, final site plan and architectural review of a commercial building at seventy-seven eighty-five Plaza Boulevard.
So this is the final site plan approval for our proposed Outback Steakhouse. I'm Derek Leary with Kinley Horn, the civil engineer on the job. We welcomed all the preliminary comments, got all of those addressed as well. We welcomed the new comments. And we plan to meet all the conditions as well. There were some initial questions about some of the screening on top of the building and we have some updated elevations to kind of show, show the screening. And then we also brought some samples of the brick as well. We're here to welcome and happy to answer any questions you guys may have.
Okay, Larry, any comments from the administration?
Administration's one concern was the location of the proposed bike rack being at the intersection with Plaza and the entrance drive. Like to see that moved closer inside into the, near to the front door. And also the light poles need to be adjusted to meet the current height of the building on, that surround the proposed outback.
Okay, so that's fine, right? Okay. Mr. Varga?
I'm just looking, so these images of the units weren't on the plans that were submitted, but I'm looking at them here. From looking at that, it suggests to me that you, that all the units are not visible from around the building, within, you know, a couple hundred yards of walking around the building, you're not going to see any units.
Right.
Promise me.
Yes, with due intent.
Okay, anything else? Mr. Perkovic, you look like you were ready to say something?
No, I have none, I think our one concern was the HVAC units as well as the sample of the proposed mural which they did provide us, and I have no problem with that as well.
So you have the building samples there, the material?
Correct, and then the sound.
Okay, you have a number you can give the city, the administration, a number of, so they, so that the sample we approve is the sample that goes up.
Did you give me the samples?
I didn't say that right.
Just the manufacturer's name and number for the...
Yeah, do you have?
Okay. Okay?
Yeah.
You're good?
Good.
Other questions, comments, criticisms? Mr. Sadoti?
Provided you get your approvals, what's your projected timeline? Commencement, completion?
I can answer for the record, my name's Jamie Butler, I'm with Outback Steakhouse of Florida. We plan to, if we get approval tonight, to launch our construction documents, go through the permitting process. This is a joint effort between ourselves and Washington Prime, Washington Prime is actually building the site, delivering us a pad, and then we would construct our building. Speaking on behalf of Washington Prime, they plan to start site construction as soon as conditions permit. As they're doing that, we'll go through our permitting process, so long and short of it, we would love to get under construction, no later than June, and get the restaurant open this year, later this year.
Okay, anything else, Mr. Sadoti?
No, thank you.
Hearing nothing else, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve with four conditions.
Okay.
Second.
Just when you're ready.
Mr. Sadoti?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic?
Yes.
Mr. Snow?
Thank you.
That was easy, right?
Thank you.
Final site plan and architectural review of a commercial building at ninety-six-hundred Diamond Center by Menards.
For the record, my name's Tom O'Neill with Menard Incorporated, five-one-zero-one Menard Drive, Eau Claire, Wisconsin. Really, very little has changed since the last approval. We've really just, because the commencement of construction has, didn't occur as soon as we had originally anticipated, our approvals have lapsed, we're here before you to, we up those approvals. We made some minor tweaks with the southwest corner as far as access to the lumberyard, but by and large, the site plan is largely consistent with what we previously approved. The staff had requested that we come armed with some material samples, that is one thing that has changed over the course of the years. This is originally intended to be a pre-formed concrete tilt-up slab panel building and we've switched that to propose a tan split-faced block that will be individually mason-laid with some accents as far as both from a horizontal perspective along the base of it and columns, made out of a Belgian edger material. It would be different in color, one, we'd have a tan and then we'd have a sienna-colored edger to provide some contrast of material type and color and texture. All of these materials, we switched to these materials, again, I can pull them up better or if they... This is the split-faced block, tan, this is a more of a darker hue, Belgian edger, and then the accent steel. These are all materials that we, Menard Incorporated, through our subsidiary arm, Midwest Manufacturer, we self-manufacture these, so we're building the store out of our own materials.
I won't see anything stored outside, correct?
Nope, that's why we have a four-acre lumberyard.
I understand, I just want to get that out on record, I won't see anything stored outside, so. Commissioners, questions for the applicant or the administration?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Varga?
This was reviewed before my tenure on the commission, so I just have a kind of an interesting question here. I'm surprised that there's no fire lane around the building and the fire department is cool with this?
Fire department's reviewed it.
Because there's, there is only fire truck access on two sides of the site and of the property. And I'm just kind of throwing that question out there more to the city, is, they're still comfortable with their decision that they made?
Yes, they are.
Okay.
Mr. Commissioner?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yeah.
If you'll note, at the east end of the Garden Center area, there's a fire gate access there, so you, in reality, you do have four-sided access to the store. Traffic is, emergency traffic will come through here, this is Knox Box access, this too is Knox Box access, and then allows for access completely around the building in that manner.
Is that a roofed area? That's not a roofed area, that's still open, but it's shielded on all sides.
Yes, correct.
So if, so the fire truck can actually circulate around the building?
That's correct.
Okay, that's, that was not apparent to me when I looked at this. The width of this, you're quite close with your, the landscaping area, materials and then, you're within, how close to the property line though?
Which side?
This would be on the east side.
East side, I believe, we're fifteen or twenty feet, enough to make up the grade, the transition grade to the east. To the east, there is some property that it becomes wetland before you get to the...
It's just, it's just the scale of this, so that green, little green strip down the east side, that's actually fifteen feet wide.
Yes.
I was concerned about just being able to maintain it, you know, maintenance, being able to cut the grass, so to speak, and fifteen feet is a, you can do it.
I believe it is.
Okay. That's, well, let me ask one other thing, I should have...
Go right ahead.
When I look at the elevations, I see a dark brown base and a kind of upper material that's, I don't know what color that is. The colors, the materials you put up on the deck there are just kind of washed-out gray colors. They seem to be different than what I'm looking at here.
I don't think the, the colors do not transfer very well to the eleven-by-seventeen sheet of paper.
Yeah, I understand, I do understand it. But what's the dark brown accent base that I see on the drawings? What material is that in front of you?
That is a larger block material like this, and this is the color, but I didn't bring the whole, you know, I'd have to reserve an extra seat for it on the plane.
I guess what I'm still saying is that that just looks like a gray block to me and it doesn't look like the brown accent that I see on the drawings. I don't want to be real picky about it, it just doesn't, I don't see how you get this appearance with that, with those colors. I mean, the upper and lower section are so similar that I don't know that I can, I see a great difference. Anyone else on the commission question that?
I would also concur with that, I don't have a problem really with the main upper portion color, it would be nice if it was just maybe a shade darker for that base to give you that contrast.
The problem with that from our perspective is we've, with the number of, with the blocks that we do manufacture, this is the darkest of the blocks that we have. We have also a tan block that we built several stores on, in a tan on tan, but that became too washed or too...
Well, okay, then let me ask this question, have you built a building with those materials in place?
Yes.
Can we, can we get a picture of what this building looks like built?
I'm sure we can.
With the materials you're proposing?
Sure we can.
What, do we, do we table this until we see that or we...
We can reserve the architectural treatment, right?
You can do that, yes. The applicant can find a, find a quick photo online, maybe you can, we can get that pulled up right now.
I don't think we can, I don't think we can find it online at this point.
Okay.
Okay, so can we separate the final architectural approval?
Yeah, you can, you can reserve final architectural approval, colors specifically if you want, it'd be that narrow about it and, so...
I think that particular, this particular block had been approved previously as part of the previous approvals.
Well, all I'm saying is I'm looking at the drawings placed in front of me for review and approval, and I see those materials and I don't see how we get this image with those materials. And I'm not saying you can't, you don't, but I'd like to see more proof that that's an, those are acceptable materials to get this design approved. Can we do that?
Yes, I assume, you know, in an actual, in an actual built environment, lighting conditions may cause some differentiation in the, as a result of the building materials or something.
If those are the materials they use all the time, he should be able to get some kind of image to show us what it actually looks like in place.
So, but you're looking for greater differentiation between the colors?
I don't know, I don't know what those materials do in the built environment relative to the design it's been placed.
So real world, so, okay.
So we can approve the final site plan and reserve architectural treatment till in the subsequent meeting?
Correct, and if you want to be very specific, you can, you know, just reserve, you know, approval of the, of the color scheme.
The color of materials.
Color, yeah, the color of the, the color of the approved materials. I assume that will allow them to keep the project on schedule.
On some sort of timeframe.
Yeah.
Yes or no?
Really have a choice, do I?
I'll entertain a motion.
A motion to approve with...
The final site plan?
Yeah, the, approve the final site plan and project development and to put off to a final approval, the architectural, the colors of architectural materials.
Basically going to table, table final architectural approval pending further information.
So we'll do two, we'll do two votes, we'll do a final site plan vote, and then an architectural treatment vote. So, give me a motion.
Motion to approve the site plan as presented.
I'll second.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. Now I'll entertain a motion to table the architectural treatment.
This is up to me again. I'd like to make a motion to table the architectural treatment of this project until we get final colors.
Second.
Just when you're ready.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll be back.
Item nine, final site plan and architectural review of warehouse building at 8240 Tyler Boulevard.
There was something funny about it.
My name is Matthew Smith with Anchor Construction. I'm here with my colleague Ryan Byma with Anchor Construction. We're here on behalf of the Fastenal Company for the final site plan and architectural review for this Fastenal branch building here on Tyler Boulevard. Reviewing the three remaining engineering comments that were on our letter, as well as, excuse me, as well as the three conditions that were stated here, we have no, we have no issues with them, and we plan to fully comply. Let's see. Happy to answer questions.
You bring building samples with you?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you want to share them with us, please?
So this will be the split-face block, as you can see on the color elevations. This will be the, the lower portion of the building, the front facade here, and then also full height on the front, and then wrapping around the east elevation, ten feet high, and a little bit on the west elevation, just to, just to match the, the... So that's the split-face block. That's adjacent to the windows, will be this, this one here, this is a different color, but that will also match the wall panels in this cool Egyptian white color, and I can pass these around if you'd like to see them. So that will be the wall, the facade on the four feet, adjacent to the windows, and then the wall panel, the metal wall panel, will be this V-rib panel, and the texture-clad panel as well.
The ratio between the metal paneling on the sidewalls and the rear walls?
It's 51% masonry and 49% metal panel.
And the code calls for a 50/50, a minimum of 50/50 split, right? So you're a foot over the minimum, right?
10% over the...
Can we go a little, you know, that, again, that's the minimum. I think the last time you were here, you talked about you could go a little higher, right?
I believe you had mentioned, yeah, that the 50% is the minimum. You said exactly that, correct. We, we went to 51%, and as you can see, yeah.
It, it matches up nicely with the bottom of the windows on the, on the west elevation to go the 10 feet high, and then also the, the door on the east elevation to go 10 feet as well, it just, it matches up very well.
Rear wall is an expansion wall, if I remember correctly?
Yes, sir, as well as, as well as the west wall.
What's the pleasure of the commission?
Mr. Chairman, go ahead.
Mr. Sedoti?
I like what you did with the front of the building, it really caught my eye when I was going through the plans. I think you did a real nice job. The, the south elevation, you know, it's an expansion wall, it looks nice, but it's facing south. I was just looking, when you're driving east or west on Tyler, you know, I, I look at the sides, and I agree with the chairman, I wish you can just put a little more on the sides. I think it would be more aesthetically pleasing when you're driving past the building from either the west or the east. I'm just asking why, why you had a limited, was it cost, or you actually felt this was the best look, or...
With our original, with our regular, with our normal and our original architectural plan here, we did have a single solid color, and at the request of, I believe, Mr. Varga, we did add that second color on the western, on the western and southern walls in order to match up with the colors, excuse me, match up with the colors on the front and eastern walls. So that's why we did it that way. I suppose the reason there's only two, or the reason there are two is because that was requested, that we add additional one to the one that we had before. So that's what we showed. It's certainly not out of the question to add more colors, but that would not be our, that would not be our preference. We're already stepping a little bit out of the ordinary on how Fastenal typically likes to have their buildings appear, and so we'd request that we keep it at the, the two colors there.
And certainly it is, it is a cost increase as well to do the, the block, certainly over the metal wall panel.
Mr. Varga?
Yeah, I have, I just have a question, and you have to remind me, because on this project, I don't remember. Right now, you're showing no rooftop equipment at all.
That's correct.
There is no rooftop equipment.
Correct. They will be located on the side here on the east elevation, but we already have the screening, if you look at the site plan and the landscape plan, there is screening proposed along that side for the entire length of the truck dock, so that will, will be screened.
So, so the mechanical equipment you're talking about is between the truck dock ramp and the building?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
That strip of land, that, and it'll be landscaped screened?
That's correct.
How do the, how do the trucks get in off of Tyler?
They pull in to the parking area.
They wrap with the building? I mean, you're not going to back in off of Tyler, are you?
Correct, they will not back in off of Tyler. They pull in into the parking area and back into the dock from there.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Perkovic.
I have a question for the applicant in regard to the, the color scheme and the amount of masonry versus metal panel. If you look at the south and, and west elevations, you have the, I'm going to call it the, the tan material at the 10-foot level, and then where it turns the sides, you're kind of stepping this down to this four-foot, you know, wainscote, if you will, on the, the north elevation. I mean, why, why would you not just run that tan at the 10-foot mark, just to make that consistent around, I guess eliminating that odd corner on both those edges?
Well, it's our opinion that it's not an odd corner. It was an architectural decision to make that corner that way. And then the reason that happens that way is because on the front facade, because of the layout of the windows and then that front entry area as well, there needs to be some sort of transition from the sidewalls down to then the pattern that's created on that front wall. So that's the reason for that step down.
Okay.
Accent there.
Anything else, Mr. Perkovic?
No.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions for the administration or the applicant?
The color of the overhead door, is it going to match the, the masonry on either side? Right now, it shows it's white, but I don't think you really mean it to be white, do you?
I believe it will be a white door.
Oh, you really want it to be a white door?
It will be a white door.
Okay. I don't have a problem with that, I just thought maybe make, make it all go away with the same color. It's all right, it's going to be white.
I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with the three stated conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic. No.
Mr. Snow.
No. I think, I think we got to get a, get away from the minimums all the time, you know? I think Mr. Perkovic's comment about the wrapping on the sides coming around to the front, could have addressed that, but it didn't, so that's the reason for the no vote.
Understood.
But you, you've got enough yes votes to move forward, so...
Thank you. Appreciate your time, thank you. Thank you.
Minor subdivision of two residential lots to create three residential lots at 7,400 Hart Street.
I'm Andy Chantolion. I'm representing Ms. Randy Stacy. What our intentions on doing is, right now, both parcels were owned by Ms. Stacy. The one lot is a non-conforming lot, it's very narrow, it does have an existing home on it. We, we submitted two sets of drawings. The first set of drawings, we only added five feet to the non-conforming lot, and it was an afterthought that that's going to make it very narrow to get a driveway back to that home, to put a garage in behind that home. So what we did was, we submitted another set of drawings, taking 20 feet from the larger parcel and adding it to that non-conforming lot, and then dividing the remaining section up into two lots, which then the non-conforming lot would become 61 feet in the frontage, the other two lots would be 70 feet each.
Larry, what are the, what are the rest of the lots on that street?
The, the rest of the lots on that street range from 41 feet wide, which is the adjacent property to this, to 82 and a half feet wide, and there's some larger ones further down, but either plan, the December 20th or the December 29th plan, would fit within that neighborhood.
And that's an older neighborhood, correct?
Correct. 1800s.
So, so before, before B2 or B4 or whatever came into existence?
It was part of the village.
Gotcha, okay. Commissioners, questions?
Mr. Chairman, why two different, which, what do you want to do? Which one?
Well...
I mean, how can we decide?
I think it would be to the benefit to go ahead and add the 20 feet to the non-conforming lot, and then make the two other parcels 70 feet each.
Which is the one that was submitted on the 29th?
Yes.
Okay, well, let's, let's, you want to limit our discussion or our approval to that, that plan, then?
Yes.
Yes, and I agree, I think that's the better outcome. All right. Now, that plan, there is a building, I don't know if it's a pad or a building, it's on the south, let's see, south property line of the first new parcel, the northern parcel. Is that a building that goes...
That's just a concrete slab.
Just a slab.
There used to be a garage there. There was a home where you see the driveway that curves around, there was another home there, and it had been taken down.
Okay, so that's just the pad. It says pad, but I just wanted to verify that.
Right, yes.
We're not creating any non-conforming conditions by doing this. In fact, let me ask you that question. As far as you know, we're not creating any non-conforming conditions where you'd need a variance to do this?
No.
With any physical, any things that are on the...
That, that pad will be removed.
Okay.
So you read the conditions in the sta, the condition in the staff report?
Yes.
Okay. Larry, any additional comments?
None.
Mr. Chairman, would like to see a condition placed, that the concrete pad, I don't have a...
Be eliminated?
Absolutely remove the thing, because the next equi, if it stays in there and the lot split happens, the next thing, there'll be, there'll be requests to build on the thing, so, which, which also comes up to the question as to whether or not there's any anticipated need for setback variances for, for what I presume will be some residential construction on there. I think that's a discussion worth having, if in fact, you know, non-conforming widths are approved, if that's going to necessitate, in order to get a, a contemporary building product on there, is to have side yard setbacks, that, that, that's a discussion worth having right now.
Well, and I asked that question, does this, does this create any non-conforming conditions, either now or in the future?
The concrete pad?
Forget the pad, you're going to take that out.
Okay.
I'm going to take that out.
Can you build three contemporary houses? I assume this is going to be redeveloped.
The one home will be, it will stay, we're going to remodel it.
On the most, the most northern site of these three?
Yeah, that home will stay, we're not going to demolish it.
And is, is there anything non-conforming to that house as it sits on the property?
No, there is not.
You have a proper setback side yard with the new property?
I believe we do, yes.
Okay. Then, so the, ultimate, your answer is, you can build without any exceptions?
Yeah, without, yes.
Variances, two contemporary houses on the two new lots?
Yes.
So we won't, the VZA won't see you back right away trying to...
With the side yard setbacks, I, that we, that are on there in that neighborhood, no, we do not.
Just, is that answered?
That's, that's exactly what we're looking for in terms of assurances, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Going after the December 29th split.
Motion to approve with two conditions, the second condition being that the existing concrete pad be removed prior to any, any application of a building permit. I miss anything else?
No. You got, you got number one, which is already there.
Yes.
And you got number two, which was just added. You agree to those two, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Actually, can we modify that? I'd like to see that pad, my judgment, that pad should come out before the plaque could be filed.
Okay.
If we wait for a building permit, that, that could be a very long wait, and it could create some problems with, with the lapse of time, things get lost in the mix, so...
All right, Mr. Chairman, I modify that second condition, that the concrete, existing concrete pad be removed prior to the filing, or at the time of the filing of the plant.
What our intentions on doing it, we're going to go into the existing home, since we're into the winter, we're going to remodel that home, in the spring, we will add the driveway, and then at that point, we're going to get a building permit for a garage in behind that home. With the weather, with the bad weather, we probably will not be doing any exterior work there until the weather breaks. So could we have time until spring to remove the pad?
I, it seems to me all of that can happen without it being platted. I mean, there's no, that, that house can be remodeled, the accessory garage can be, detached accessory garage can be constructed, I mean, all, all that can happen without it being platted.
Okay, so we're just going to go ahead with approval, is...
That'd be my recommendation, yes.
With the slab being removed for final approval, final plating?
Yes.
Is there a motion?
Carry that.
Motion and a second, right?
Need a second, Council.
Need a second.
I'll second.
Just call the roll, please.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. Okay. Larry, anything under the director's report?
Nothing.
Nothing? Matthew, anything under the director's report? Okay. Stand a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sedoti?
Just briefly, I just would like to thank publicly Mr. Valeri and Mrs. Simperman for their hard work, their dedication, and most importantly, their professionalism when they served as...
Well said. I think Allison Maritz needs to get a little pat in the back, too.
I just want to wish them...
But Mr. Valeri and Mrs., Mrs. Simperman served on the commission for quite a lengthy time, so...